Special meeting of the Torrington Board of Education at 5:30 PM. Look, it's starting on time. Now you may call the roll when you are ready.
Mr. Brother.
Here.
Ms. Conway.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Mr. Cronin.
Here.
Mr. Kretis.
Here.
Mr. Yipolios, excuse me.
Ms. Foner.
Here.
Mr. Kisco.
Here.
Mr. Knight.
Here.
Mr. Putnam.
Here.
Mayor Carbone, our representative. Dr. Baker.
Excuse.
Ms. Ferguson.
Here.
Ms. Labby.
Here.
Mr. Pagola.
Excuse.
Ms. Schulte.
Here.
Ms. Vians.
Excuse.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Thank you. So we'll dive right in. We have item three, discussion and possible action on the staff dress code policy. Everyone's got in front of them a draft. You would notice a couple of highlighted sections where there are some proposals for modest changes that we'd like to discuss this evening. Should I just dive right into them or does whoever wrote them down want to do it?
Well, I could just tee it up. Sue and Kim could share. So I think at the last meeting, I think it was very productive. I think a lot of voices and opinions were heard. And I think that the subcommittee did a really good job listening to everyone at the table and then using that document that was really there for an outline that evening per se, but also as a really good starting point. And I think that was exactly what was in front of everyone. And I think Kristin captured everyone's ideas and thoughts that evening. And then she made some edits capturing everyone's ideas. And they were very minor. As everyone can see on the board this evening, there's, I think, only three or four edits that were there. And then Sue and Kim had discussed, after seeing those edits, had discussed some other items that we'd like to comment on this evening for the board to consider. And then after hearing that, the board would have a really good template moving forward that we would then obviously ask the board to take a look at and move forward pending the final approval from. Without jumping the gun too much, I'll turn it to Kristin and she can explain her edits and then Sue and Kim could explain theirs.
Okay. So yeah, the majority of these, I really didn't change too much. There was, I know there was some question about the color of the wash of the jeans. I'm, I put in here that light wash shall be permitted, provided there are no rips or tears. Just because I don't feel like that's a reasonable expectation. I think a dark wash jean is more of a generational expectation. So that was one of the first things that I put in there. I did put that sneakers shall be permitted, provided they're clean and professional. One thing I did. Sweatshirts and T-shirts shall be permitted, provided they promote school sphere or educational purposes. There is a sentence in there that I'll let Sue discuss. In terms of the leggings may be worn as long as the top covers the entire buttocks. The two inches above the knee, I think, needs to be removed. Covering the buttocks is sufficient mainly because I think we're looking at a top with like possibly tights underneath is what that might be related to. Where if you're wearing leggings, it's not an undergarment, it's not a CQ garment. So I think two inches above the knee is a little over the top. So those are my suggestions. I think they're reasonable.
Yeah, let's hear about everything that's new and then we can dive into it.
So the statement that Kristin just said she would let us address is under number six, where there was some concern, I think you recall from the last time we were together, there was some confusion about what a graphic T-shirt really is. The intention was never to prohibit, you know, spirit wear or that type of thing. So in talking with a teacher, we came up with this suggestion. Clothing with graphics slogans or logos must be appropriate for a school setting. Graphic tees or sweatshirts directly related to an employee's role with TPS, such as school branded apparel or items connected to curriculum and school programs are permitted. Just to clarify the language so that there was a clear understanding. The other suggestion that we would offer is aligns with the graphic tee hoodie. Would the board want to consider perhaps limiting that to a couple of days a week? We did some research and looked around, other districts do that, where there's a day during the week designated for a spirit day. District, the state also have typically a Friday which, and we used to do this here in Torrington, a donation day, Friday, which was also a casual dress day. And then a charity benefited from that. So just something to throw out there for the board to follow.
So unless anyone has a different preference, I think we can start from the top and discuss each of these maybe in line. I'll start, I guess chair's prerogative, right? I am A okay with Kristin's proposed edit on the jeans. I think the most essential thing is that you're not wearing jeans that are ripped open in thirty places. I personally have no preference nor consideration for the professionalism of a particular color of jean. But that's just my take if other folks have something to throw out there on that. So would we, all right, by straw poll, I guess, because we're only, we're gonna ask for just one vote unless we need to. So by straw poll, is everybody okay with that change? If you are, raise your hand. If you are not, raise your hand. Okay, all right, so we'll work that in.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
May I make a suggestion that we just leave the first sentence as that item and take the rest of it out because it doesn't really, I don't know if that.
Yeah, so it would just say.
Jeans with holes, rips.
Unacceptable items, jeans with holes, rips, phrase, excessive fitting or states.
Yeah.
And then the rest of it would be struck.
And maybe add something at the end that says, you know, that are professional, you know.
Yeah, well.
I just feel like there's a lot of words in there that don't necessarily apply if that's gonna be the board's.
And in all things, right, there's three rules. Be physically clean, neat, well groomed, and dress in a manner reflecting your professional style. So we don't necessarily need to add the word professional in every single line either. I think it's, you know, it's an essential object of any employment.
I think it goes without saying, oh, maybe this is where Kim has headed. You know, we're gonna have to rework this so that it's mathematically correct, but we'll get the spirit of the decision.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I think, I think it makes sense because all we're really at that point are looking to make it maybe still. Okay, so with, with Ms. Cor, we'll move on. So the next proposal relates to shoes. So the change, I think, is that it would read, tell me if I'm wrong, Kristin, but it should, it would read unacceptable items. Athletic shoes, sports sandals and flip flops. Sneakers shall be permitted, provided they are clean and professional. That's what you'd like it to read.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we don't need to allow sports sandals and flip flops, those types of things. But what about, the only thing that's not on here, like open toed sandals and like leather months, like nicer sandals, like that's not on here. I don't know if that's.
I mean, I think.
It's not.
Intention of the original writer or writers would be to prohibit any sandals of any kind at all times. I'm not stating a claim on that, but I think that's the intention of the original writing. So if you're looking to change that, I mean, the whole thing's up for discussion, so. By all means, look.
Well, if they wanna allow open toed sandals, the big argument for sneakers was safety and have to move quickly.
Right.
I don't think open toed sandals would fall under either one of those categories.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I mean, I.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just not listed. I just want, if, if they're gonna be prohibited, it should be specific.
Yeah, we can be, we can be more specific there. How does, how do folks think about the sneakers issue? My understanding, having not been there, is that it's something where we got a lot of feedback. And I obviously saw a lot, written feedback.
Yes, yes.
In our emails, so.
I like it, except, I'd like to include somehow a solid color or something along those lines to avoid light up shoes and glitter and, you know, like clown shoes. And I, I can't think of a better way to explain it, but I just think it would be. Yeah, just more, you know, in a professional, solid color sneaker. And I think that's easy enough to find.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to think that where is the teacher who would be intentionally provocative for no reason to the dress code? So I, I mean, I'm fine with putting it in. I just also don't think that it's, you know, it's not gonna be the most common thing. I think, you know, I don't know many adults who wear excessively ornamented shoes in the day to day.
To work.
It's certainly not to work.
That's all, that's all I'm saying. I agree, I have some pretty sparkly sneakers myself and I would wear it to a fair or something. But for a concert, I wouldn't want to work.
Yeah, it is.
That's my two cents. I'm just, I'm like.
Right, no, as silly as it may seem, I think it can sometimes be hard to define things like clean and professional.
Solid color is pretty easy to define.
Right, no, yeah, I'm just saying, like, if it just says clean and professional, like, what does that mean? Does that mean I can't wear my clown shoes?
Right.
It sounds like what you're going for is non-distracting, right?
That's a great word.
So it's a shoe that's not distracting.
Not distracting.
It doesn't need to be bright green and pink and flashy lights because it's a distraction. It's, it's not there because it's, if it's for comfort, you want to look professional. These are today's youth that we're trying to develop into tomorrow's professionals. And you're trying to get everybody to send an example. So sneakers for comfort and emergency and fast moving, I'm certainly in favor of it. But I also understand the flip side that that doesn't mean they're opening the board for, you know, there's a set of Nike arrows with seven colors on it. And you're doing it not as a fascist statement, but as a, I need this. Now, reasons that were brought forward last week that everybody has listened to. So that's my take on it. How would we want to want that?
Yeah.
But I guess.
Okay, so it would, I would say something along the lines of sneakers shall be permitted, provided they are clean and professional and their appearance is not disruptive to the learning environment. How about that?
Something along the lines of they're non, non distracting. That would not just.
I don't know, I don't know if the language is, but I know chimeras.
Yeah.
Right, we've only used the phrase like disruptive to the learning environment in a lot of things to essentially mean.
And Joss may send it back with that, so.
Yeah, spend too much time with lawyers.
Yeah.
Okay, so by straw poll, if you, oh.
Question one on shoes, what do, I haven't been paying attention much. But what does a teacher or an administrator wear? Well, you brought the point about open toed shoes. What do they normally wear around the school? You see people in, in like a dressy shoe or a heel type thing, which a heel obviously isn't helpful for moving quickly, which was one of the arguments. But before we close the topic, could we at least get, I don't know what they'll wear normally administrators and such would wear or, you know, department head. Somebody who may meet with parents more often, it's just a different type of dress. At least in my world, it was a different type of dress based on who you interact with. So what do, I'm asking because I.
So your thinking, I think, it sounds like maybe perhaps you're suggesting a sandal or an open toed sandal that maybe has a back. Like I have a pair on right now, but there's no back to it, so they're not safe.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that maybe we have an option that is still meets the qualification for safe. But again, I'm with you, an open toed sandal with no back that you're gonna, as soon as you make one run for a door, you're on the ground not helping a student, which are our primary focus.
And you lost a shoe.
In emergency, that doesn't work. But is there, it came up last week and Kristin mentioned, I started to think about it.
Especially in the, in the summer.
Yeah, in the summer, well, are there options for those things?
And I, I do, I do see teachers dressed quite often in like, you know, dresses in the summer or, you know, May and June, and they have a nice pair of sandals on with a back. So I, I just, I don't know what's, I think it needs to be a little bit more weighted. It's just specific, yeah, we can.
Yeah, I think the, I think the back is the key, right? I think that you can wear a sandal that's appropriate, you know, that has a back and it's, you know, elevated in the back, you know, I don't know the term wedge or.
Ledge or whatever happens in the world.
Right, I mean, that, then I think those are appropriate. Because like to your point, it goes with the demeanor of decor of people. But I think when you have a sandal like, no offense, what Sue's wearing,
Yeah, they're not safe.
that would not be appropriate to wear.
Right, absolutely.
So I agree, I think that, and we could kind of, Kim, I think, could codify that with Sue. I'm, I am not the fashionista.
I mean, never worn them before, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I, I've never worn them.
I can't say that I could, I can't say that they speak to the safety of them, but.
To frame it, perhaps someone comfortably remember that this list is things that are not permitted, not things that are.
Okay.
So all you would have to do is put down what you don't want. So if you don't want open toed shoes without a back on them, just write that. Because everything else, provided otherwise, falls under the initial three clauses would be approved. Right, this list is not exhaustive, but. Okay, so by straw poll, if you are finding yourself accepting of those proposed changes, please raise your hand. If you are not, Kristin, Kristin, if you want to add something.
So just with one caveat, in terms of the, the sneakers, I just wanna see the wording on the colors. Because while I see Sue's point and I agree, I think one color sneaker is very difficult to find because you're gonna find some sort of, even if you have a white sneaker, it's gonna have some sort of trim on it.
Yeah, I think, I think we moved toward something that's, something along the lines of like not, not distracting, not sort of the learning environment. Because I, I, you're right, I am ambivalent if your sneakers are blue and white. Okay, right.
Right, yeah, right, right.
So I think the, the goal is to define what we actually want while being as non-restrictive as possible, right? Like there's, there's stuff that we explicitly don't want, but we also don't want everybody to just wear the same thing every day, right?
Right.
Okay, let's talk about sweatshirts and T-shirts. We have effectively two different proposed languages here.
We should go with Sue's though.
Uh, yeah, I.
That was entered after my edits.
Right, yeah, and so for everyone's benefit, well, the one that Kristin is advocating for and proposed by Sue Ferguson reads, clothing with graphics slogans or logos must be appropriate for a school setting. Graphic T-shirts or sweatshirts directly related to an employee's role with Torrington Public Schools, such as brand, uh, sorry, such as school branded apparel or items connected to curriculum and school programs are permitted. So you can wear, you wear your big Torrington tee on your shirt. And I feel like that's almost by T.
Is, is that gonna be limited to the, either a Wednesday and then maybe a Friday, a dress down day for, to go towards a charity? Because I'd like to see us actually get into that again, that was over there.
Yeah, it's, it's a worthy discussion. I would say off, my, my immediate reaction is that if we're gonna pass out shirts with the Torrington tee or say Torrington Public Schools on them at events and stuff like that.
This is the one.
Right, we're passing them out to people who work for us. I feel like we shouldn't say, also, now you can't wear this to work. I just want you to wear this in public. Like, you know what I mean?
So I, I, I'm fine with this language, but limiting it to one or two days a week. Because it doesn't change anything if it's allowed every day. There's, there's still T-shirts and sweatshirts.
Jeff.
I was going to add that my comment before, which is we're making tomorrow's professionals. I like, I like the, the graphic tees that are supportive, the cool, somebody mentioned a Star Wars math one a couple of weeks ago, science one, and the Torrington, the stuff that promotes our school identity, I love it. I do think that it's really to entertain Sue Ferguson's idea of, and not to say that everybody would do this, right? You know, you hate to think of it as what will fifteen percent of the people do, but you don't want everybody coming in with a Torrington tee shirt on five days a week. We do wanna set that example, and that's, that's sort of the goal of the board. So I would be fully in support of a number of days a week or special days. Whether maybe one day a week is always allowed, or one day a week is a, is a special charity donation. And maybe that donation rotates through the district to some of our own, you know, to maybe a variety of external, sort of, external charities and some of our own like hat day for the football team or, you know, we're gonna do special sock day for the cheerleaders or whatever it may be. There's a great opportunity for some innovation there.
Thanks for sharing your question.
Yeah, we, we do, we do later make exceptions as well for school sponsored, district sponsored spirit days, school sponsored events, et cetera.
Oh, then yes.
So this would be more like what we're talking about is just it's a, a normal day. And you are wearing a T-shirt, just to frame it, Kristin.
I guess I have to keep in mind that some schools have spirit days.
Right.
In specific colors worn, I'm sort of.
Yes, so the, the way, the way it actually reads in the exception list is the second to last one is employees may dress accordingly for approved district or school sponsored spirit days.
Okay.
So even if it's just their school.
Great.
It still makes the exception for that.
Perfect.
But if you're a non, stop, would we, oh, sorry.
My question was on that, the school sponsored spirit days, are they every week or monthly? How does that work? I think it may be a cherry, yes. You know, they have a spirit week and, you know, that's, I think, you know, we've said clearly in here like no pajama pants, but if they had a pajama day, clearly pajama pants would be okay. I'm just wondering if it's more if it's weekly, yes. And it's not, don't tell me, no.
I don't think it's weekly, no.
Yeah.
It's meant to be special.
Right, I think the language that you're talking about would have to read something along the lines of, you know, dress down days may be permitted up to X number of days per week at the discretion of, and you could choose either the superintendent or the building principal, whichever is the board's pleasure.
I would say superintendent.
And that way, however it's structured and whichever days they are, is not something that's set in stone. That feels like the kind of thing that people can work out without being forced into it by us.
Which day you mean, yeah, right.
Yeah. Um, I don't know that I necessarily am in love with the idea, but, you know, I think that's how it would have to be structured if we were gonna do it. I think, I don't think we'd want to get into the weeds on picking days.
Right, I agree.
People can wear Torrington T-shirts.
T-shirts, yeah, I agree, yeah.
And other things like that. But the other thing is, to be clear, the way this clause is written, it, it says graphic T-shirts or sweatshirts directly related to an employee's role with Torrington Public Schools, such as the brand and stuff. So I think it's important to clarify, the folks who are looking for this, whether you're looking to let people So I think it's important to clarify, the folks who are looking for this, whether you're looking to let people wear any tee shirt or sweatshirt, provided, of course, it means the rules for what can be on it on these dress down days. Or are you saying, you know, you have to donate a dollar to the food bank to wear your Torrington branded tee, Torrington Public School branded tee shirt?
No, I don't want to say that. I don't want to say that, right?
Right, the goal would be that if it's, if it is a dress down day, they can be wearing whatever tee shirt or sweatshirt they want that's in accordance with the rules for what it is meant. That's what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
But limit it to two days.
Sure, right, yeah, yes, I just want to make, because the way it's written now, right, if we just add, if you do it two days a week, it would still only let people wear their Torrington branded, that part too. Well, what do other folks think?
In regards to this, and I'm not totally up to speed on the student dress code, but do we, not a lot of kids wear hoodies?
Hoodies are permitted, they are not allowed to wear their hoodie up.
Which makes sense. I just, again, the safety thing, there's a lot of stuff about safety. If a teacher's trying to intervene in an altercation, hoodie, you wearing a hoodie is not really the best thing to wear.
Yeah, well, I think, so.
What is that allowed?
We could just as well, right, we could just as well.
We're talking about sweatshirts, so what I'm getting at is do we separate shirts and hoodies?
We can absolutely do that, right? We can make a distinction between hooded clothing and not hooded clothing.
I don't see a teacher get hammer tossed by, because something.
Just wrap their hood, right?
Yeah, there, there's a very simple distinction in the way that we can write that. It just made it clear, like, you can't write anything with a hood on it, and I think that's reasonable as well.
Especially for safety purposes, I thought, and it's not that it hasn't happened.
Okay, so where are folks at? I guess the first thing would be, do you want, do people want to allow, under any circumstance at all, sometimes or some T-shirts and sweatshirts? And then we can talk about how to structure it.
Yes.
Anybody, anybody against that? Okay, all right, so then what, I guess, how do I phrase this? If your preference is to create dress down days in the policy in line with the proposed, raise your hand.
Versus what?
Uh.
Sorry?
Well, no, I think, I think if, if this does not have a majority in the straw poll, then we would toss the idea and work on the rest of it.
I think I see what alternative, alternative. Okay, gotcha. All right.
Um, so, but if you want that, then we can just do that. So if you want to do dress down days in the policy, I would say indicate that, or issue that. Okay, so that's got majority support, so let's, let's run with that.
Yeah.
What, one day or two? Anyone care?
For two.
Two, great. Anyone else? Anyone want to argue?
One would be mine, but I'm not going to die on the sword.
Yeah, one, yeah, one would be mine too, but I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on it.
Right.
Right.
Because here, the reason, the reasoning behind it, there are spirit days in the buildings and, and everybody has special days. So that leads it to, then that ends up with three days a week, if it happens to be, I mean, we're kind of just, we're splitting hairs at this point, but, you know, I just don't want every week to turn to an extra spirit day.
Right, so I think it should say up to two days per week at the discretion of the superintendent.
You know what I mean?
Inclusive of spirit days and whatever, you could just write it to say up to two days a week, including, it would include spirit days or anything else.
Perfect. Yeah.
Big idea, we'll see what happens, right? If you go to two days and people are wearing two days, this is either going to be successful, we'll have a, the cultural change to whatever he wants to see, and it'll be great, or there'll be people who are trying to push the limits and they'll sit down and do it again. I think most people are responsible enough to realize the goal that the board's coming in, and everybody's going to kind of figure out a way to make it work, but if it doesn't, then we have to come back and look at it again, which nobody would want to do, so I'm sure it'll be fun.
Right, my only thing is, it won't say this, but I think we should be clear about our intent. The intent would not have a say up to two days at the discretion of the superintendent so that we can dangle these in front of schools, principals, employees, et cetera, as rewards or punishments. It's just how, how, right, it, right, it's just how best to make the system work.
Well, that would happen, number one.
We're just giving the administrators a little leeway on how best to structure this. It's not like a, yeah, we can go to zero if you annoy us kind of thing. I think everybody here knows that, but I think it's important to just say it. Okay, so.
We're not going to build that into the policy.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. I just, I'm just saying it now.
Okay.
So that it doesn't fly through the room or the hilt.
All right, gotcha.
And the last thing is, I'm totally fine with, like, you know, if it just says leggings may be worn as long as the top covers the entire buttocks.
Period.
Great, yeah.
Yeah, because I think it's a possibility that this may, this sentence may have been written thinking that leggings were more like tights.
Yeah, well.
Which I could see because tights are an undergarment and should be covered.
Right, which we already.
Which we, we discussed at length.
Which we, we discussed at length from the student, from the student one.
From the student one, but this is, clearly says leggings, does not say tights, so I think it, as long as.
Right, and if you are wearing leggings that are short, not wearing women's clothing, I'm just guessing, you're doing it under like a skirt or a dress to make sure the wind doesn't catch you the wrong way.
You would put tights under a skirt or a dress, not leggings, yeah.
Tights, yeah, right, and it's all, it would all be in the line.
So you would be wanting to make a, a shirt or.
Okay, right, fine, then let's, yeah, I'm okay with that. Is everyone okay with that? I don't think we need to straw poll it, Kristen, what she's talking about. Okay.
Yeah.
So everything else here, to be clear, nobody has any issues with, right, so provisions on tank tops with spaghetti straps, you can't wear underwear as outerwear, you can't, you know, number eight deals with all the things you can't have on any of your clothing, which is very simple. It's all the stuff that you wouldn't be wearing at work anywhere, right? Nothing that's of a sexual nature or is an advertisement for a cigarette brand, et cetera. I don't think anybody's wearing that stuff. Anyway, I, I think all the rest of this makes sense to me. I'm just looking it over one last time to make sure. You know, we make note of reasonable accommodations for religious wear, which we would have anyway. In the same way that even though the policy doesn't make explicit exception for anything with a medical note, we would obviously accommodate anybody's medical needs. Go ahead. I don't have anything. Anyone else? Okay, now, knowing that there is going to be a language cleanup on the part of our administrative team, and it'll be viewed for its compliance of the law by the board's legal team, does the board want, is the board's pleasure to wait until we see that final language to vote? Or are people comfortable voting tonight, knowing that the amended language will be available shortly? It's up to you. We can do that.
We should probably see the real language before.
I would, I would, yeah, I'd see the end of it.
Excellent, okay.
I'd want to see the end of the language.
Right, and we listed this as possible, so we can, we can make no vote.
Just for next week?
Yeah, we can do it next week.
Or for board meeting next week, so.
Next week, next week.
Yeah, we can vote next Wednesday.
Okay, great, so that's, that's that. So then we just have update on the RFP process for the friends of Donna.
So the process has been going really well. It's announced, it's been advertised. Currently, we have six bids, and it closes tomorrow at four o'clock. Donna and I have, the reason we had to extend it, we had some questions, but it's all good. And tomorrow at four o'clock, it will officially close, so we will be able to review it and then present the board with the people who have put proposed bid in and the ones that we feel very.
And there's not a budget committee meeting between now and the next board meeting, is there?
The next board meeting is next Wednesday.
Right, yeah. So while we are on this topic, because the bids close tomorrow, what is the board's pleasure on skipping a referral to the budget committee and hearing this issue for consideration directly on the board's agenda? We have the ability to do so. We can place whatever we need to on our agenda, but if people want it, you want to see it.
I'd like to see it, I'm, I want to see it sooner than later.
Yes, and, yeah, anybody have any objection to that? Do people desperately want to see it in the committee process? Okay, all right, so then, provided that all is going well with the bids and the review, oh, Alan, did you have something?
Alan and Glenn, no, I just wanted to show you guys were fine, okay, you're in, sorry.
Yes, as long as nothing's gone wrong, we'll place that for consideration on the board's agenda for its next regular meeting. Anyone have any questions? Great, okay, with that, I will hear motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And so we are adjourned at.